Now, what is also very positive, in the sense, well, too positive, is the amount of money that we have in our health insurance trust fund. Currently, our health insurance trust fund, which is money that comes from the employees, that's what it is, and forty percent to the employer, and just now they're paying sixty percent. That all goes into this trust fund, and then money to pay out, to pay the cost. Currently, that trust fund has about two point six million dollars in it. The recommended minimum amount is one point six million dollars, so we're at an accessible minimum. But again, it's not a bad thing, it must occur in the past, in order to draw that trust fund down, there's consideration of a premium holiday rate, which would allow for employees not to have to pay premiums for a certain period of time, which would then have the effect of reducing the budget. But I'd rather go around that way as opposed to putting in a artificially deflated rate increase, because the next part, as you say, every part of the process where one year going up and the next year going down. I'd rather deal with the excess of, I'm sure, on two of these holidays as opposed to the rates of this question. So this was all discussed and explained at the insurance advisory committee meeting, and we know this several months ago. And we continue to meet with millions of employees and explain this, for most part, for the reasons that we understand. Have any questions?
Just looking at the current, I know you told us your capacity number, interesting, and now, I know you said a premium for that, the attendance, but at times. So there were documents that were distributed to you, and you wasn't there or can't visit.
That's right. Can I get my, I have nobody more, if anyone's coming to talk to me about this, is there more to talk about?
The last time they did a holiday, how much is there on their savings that they get after that, what actually did cost?
I'll have to check on that, I was very tired.
So as you're checking on that, with that savings in mind, it could be a month of holidaying for our employees?
I think we need to do calculations on that before we look forward, I think you give out numbers of dollars, that they would back them up with calculations.
Yeah, and I think the way it worked the last time, if I remember correctly, was it wasn't, you know, I said the money was based on what they had come to contribution with, and they were, you know, they were not paid that part of the money. So whenever they used to pay me out each month as a contribution, what they thought, um, let's just play it by our own callings.
Do you, is there, is there?
I think my question's gonna be later on, just once we get the answer to most of the holiday savings is, if we have a surplus, then why would we need to increase the cost if we already have a surplus? Does it cost to either just stay the same as it is now, or, I think those are questionable ones, that's answered. So I do have questions about a surplus, and then charging more on top of a surplus.
Do you have any to talk about this?
Are you catching this okay on TV? Okay, thank you, Mark, for that town administration report. We're gonna go right to C1 action.
I forgot something. This came in, uh, the office, before the afternoon agenda was put together, and it is a request from the Fair and Improvement Association to meet the town hall for their summer concerts, and they're scheduled things in July fourteenth, July twenty first, July twenty eighth, and August fourth, and August eleventh. Since this is unanticipated, we're gonna probably vote on improvement this evening.
Is there a motion to approve the Fair and Improvement Association's summer concerts series?
Let me make that motion.
I'll second it. Motion made in second, any further discussion on the motion? Here now a call for vote, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, pass unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Reese, for that. Okay, we're gonna go right into C1 action. Consider appointment of the Board of Appeals alternate, three applicants ready for learn, Keith Silva, Sylvia. That's okay. On the agenda, it says Silva, but it's Sylvia. In fact, I definitely know it's Sylvia, because I know, I see his wife over there, so I know that it's Sylvia. And, uh, Rui de Silva. Discussion.
I think it's nice to have, I think it's just remote people for the position. And I know, you know, a couple of them had some background, but why they were interested. And one didn't really specify, and just, you know, just that he was interested. I personally, I've seen the applicants here, what they have, you know, said that they could add. I know Mr. Philouren is, has been very active in this group, in this committee, in the past, and is very active in a number of ways in the community. And I like, I like what he's done, I've served on the community board myself. But their, the question that was brought up, I think is, is real, may not be a legal issue, but there's something there that we need to look at. The role of those two, the two in Board of Appeals. So I understand why, you know, the Chair of the Board of Appeals has asked for another representative. And I personally feel like, looking at the other two candidates, Mr. Sylvia may not have served in a role like this in the past, but I know that a lot of volunteer for the town in many different ways, from working in the time capsules, and according to the Chair of the Town Hall, or for the Scones, he's always there for counseling aging. I think, you know, that means a lot to me, that someone that has that kind of education for the town, and I'd like to see him have an opportunity.
Basically, I feel the same way that, just talking to Espinola here. The problem that we got with this was we were given, just so the folks on the other end, there was a letter that came along with, along with when we were making appointments to the zoning Board of Appeals. And the letter, basically, to the selectman was that there was the amount of that is also on the planning board, and anybody who goes in front of the planning board, that has, if they don't get, like, the decision, they have to go in front of the Board of Appeals. I've thought about this, I've read the, what everybody's written here for us, and I kinda find it, in my opinion, it's almost like a Roger Gettall instance. If you go to somewhere and they give you an opinion on something, and then you turn around, and then you're also the appeal, on the appeal board, I don't think you're gonna feel you get a fair, fair chance towards anything. So I, my vote's gonna be for Keith Sylvia this evening. I know he's done excellent work throughout the town, so that'll be my vote.
Thank you. I looked into all three candidates, as is our requirement, and I did have a conversation with Mr. Philouren, and also Mark Reese, town administrator, to find out the planning board versus the Board of Appeals, and was very highly educated on that though there is not a conflict of interest, it is a very, could be a very conflicting situation. If one is making the rules, the other one has to enforce the rules. And I know Mr. Sylvia, for his work around town, and I do know that on the Board of Appeals, there was an issue where they really needed someone from the construction business to give a really clear answer, and unfortunately, they did not have that on the board at the time. And so what they needed is a person who would be there, actually. And I think that that could have solved a lot of concerns that the town had for, when it comes to buildings, and setting up of buildings on an appeal board. So I'm, I'm gonna give my support to Keith Sylvia. So with that in mind, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Keith Sylvia to the alternative position of Appeals.
Second. Motion made in second, any further discussion on the motion? Here now a call for vote, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, pass unanimously. On the agenda, it says that we have a, an applicant, it's actually Helena Olivera. When you do spell check on certain things, Portuguese does not come across on spell check. I've learned that because of being in Portugal and sending some emails, and it comes out in totally different languages, but, but it is Helena Olivera. And she writes, we currently have, actually, the Bell Committee, Doug Bray, the chairman, writes, "We currently have an opening for full member at our committee due to our recent resignation. Upon unanimous consideration and vote, we request that you appoint Helena Olivera of Two Harperview Avenue, Fairhaven, Mass., as a full member of the committee. Helena Olivera is currently serving on the committee as an associate member."
I'd like to make a motion to appoint.
Second. Motion made in second, any further discussion on the motion? Here now a call for both, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, pass unanimously. Next, we have considered the approval of the Fort Phoenix five K walk run on September eleventh, two thousand sixteen. This address to the Board of Selectmen. The purpose of this letter is to request permission to hold the sixteenth annual Fort Phoenix five K road race walk on Sunday, September eleventh, two thousand sixteen, at ten a.m. in Fairhaven. Our committee has applied for a special permit with the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, and is awaiting its approval. The race will include a five K walk, which will be held concurrently with the five K run. Similar to last year's race, the run net proceeds will benefit organizations in the town of Fairhaven, split between communities, sports, education, and history categories. We are a small race, our mission statement is to be the first and foremost of runners' road race. Our goal is to host a quality event for reasonable entry fee. Participant safety, accurate timing, and recognition of top performers are considered our priorities. We want all participants to leave the event feeling that it was a first-rate road race experience. We are committed to supporting the businesses that provide financial sponsorship to the race, and encourage our participants to do likewise. We will never shortchange our participants in order to increase the amount we give at our designated causes. Our race committee will decide on a year-to-year basis what causes or cause will, within the community, we will help select and support. If you have any questions regarding the race, I'll be happy to answer them. Sincerely, Kathy Lopes, Race Group.
I think Ms. Lopes does a great job of organizing, a couple of different events in town, this is one of them. And I'd definitely support this effort.
Again, just what Lopes said, this is something that's happened in the past, so I think we should definitely, um, consider our differences.
Yes, Kathy Lopes does an incredible job of this, and many children receive scholarships from this race in the town of Fairhaven, so it's definitely giving back to the community. So is there a motion to approve the Fort Phoenix five K walk run for September eleventh, two thousand sixteen?
Motion approved.
Second. Motion made in second, any further discussion on the motion? Here now a call for vote, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, pass unanimously. Next, we have the approval of outdoor movie night for July twenty third, two thousand sixteen. Dear Fairhaven Board of Selectmen, on Saturday, July twenty third, the North Fairhaven Improvement Association, East Fairhaven Improvement Association, Fairhaven Improvement Association, the Fairhaven Lions, and the Fairhaven Rotary Club will once again be holding outdoor movie night at Lipsy Park. Our rein date is Sunday, July twenty fourth, two thousand sixteen. This year will be showing the movie Inside Out. There will be a concert performance by the Girls Rule Tour Groups, and a special appearance by Joy from the movie. Face painting and a bubble mount will be available for the children prior to the start of the movie. Food vendors and concession stand will also be available for food purchases. The United Way has generously awarded Fairhaven Outdoor Movie Night for the mini grant. We're asking for your support again this year for this great fun event. We hope to see you there. Sincerely, Wayne Olivera, Co-Chairman, and Vicky Pickett, Co-Chairman.
Another, another great event, it's nice to see they got the United Way grant supported, and all those groups coming together on this event for the community, so definitely glad to support.
Again, I'd just like to support this, and, and any way that we can, we'll have the Board of Public Works ask them if they can run up the battle, so that what they need to do down there.
It's always a fun night, and the kids really enjoy it. And I know they had one trouble one year with the movie didn't show up, but this kid still had fun, and, and since then, it's been a great tradition that we thank Mr. Olivera and Ms. Pickett for continually doing this. So is there a motion to approve movie night for July twenty third, two thousand sixteen? Second. Motion made in second, any further discussion on the motion? Here now a call for vote, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, pass unanimously. Next, we have the vote positions on special town meeting articles.
So as the Board is aware, we have a, okay. So we scheduled a special town meeting for June thirtieth, for the primary purpose of talking about the sale of the Oxford School. When I just handed out, I have some proposed motions to go along with that, so that, so that the annual town meeting will have the motions available in advance for the meetings, so people can look at them. So, for example, article one, sale of Oxford School, working with town council, we put a motion together that authorizes the sale of the motion, or sale of the Oxford School, based on a number of criteria or conditions. Those conditions include the sale price of three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, with the deposit of twenty thousand, the closing day of December thirty first, allows for extensions, building fees shall not exceed ninety thousand, that they will break out the fire station from the existing parcels, so the town can continue on that, that there will be an inspection period, that the town, the purchaser will advance five thousand towards maintaining the terms for the building, that permits and approvals, you know, for the purchase will limit the property to be used for sixty-two years, people sixty-two years of older, that there would be an option for the purchaser to buy the property in case of fire or other casualty, that there are provisions for taking back the deposit on termination of the purchase and sale. At the town will have the option to design permanent disorder, who will add low costs to the purchaser, and that there will be a construction of a thirty space asphalt park that's adjacent to the building, and it's, and the park that, that. So these are the major components of the purchase and sale agreement, that the Board has been reviewing for the last several months. This does provide that the town meeting vote would contain these conditions, so that the ultimate, I think that would be approved by the Board of Selectmen, would have the provisions of it. So, do you want to go through the different, on the other article before you can sign your votes on this, or?
Either way, I have a question about this one. Sure, just, you know, so, you know, just sometimes you'll see, you know, not, not limited to these things. So these, these are the major things, so obviously, there's a, there's a whole purchase and sales document, that, all that's part of it, so, does that mean that in the motion, you know, that referred to, this, this is really basically just to let the town leaders know what the highlights of that document are?
Well, it does both of that, because the town meeting votes, the way it is written, you'll be required to sign the purchase and sale agreement that has these provisions in it. So you would have an attitude to say, for example, that you wanted to reduce the purchase price to three hundred thousand dollars, this town meeting only voted at three hundred twenty-five thousand?
Right, which is a good thing, but, but in addition to that, anything that was, you know, these are the major struggles, but any minor points is still part of the purchase and sale agreement that, that they're essentially voting on, it's still, it's still there, it's not.
That's correct, yes, yeah.
I just, I just wanted.
If this authorizes, the Board of Selectmen enter into a purchase and sale agreement with these major provisions in it, obviously, there's a lot of other legalese that goes along with such a document, but, you know, that's a twenty-page document, so this condenses the major points into the motion.
There's more clarification for people who need some, and contact town leaders.
So the next article, two, is fire station sewer tie-ins, and this would, the motion here would read to transfer the surplus revenue, twenty-five thousand dollars, for a sewer tie-in to the town building known as Fire Station Number Three, located at Assessor Nap, twenty-two A, Lot One Twenty-three. As backup, we provided you some quotes that the Board of Public Works made for towns that could provide it. The maximum quote is twenty-five thousand. I put that number in because of, you know, I have a lot of flexibility in terms of what option you want to pursue for the connection of this. As you know, the, the fire station currently operates under a subject system, and it's in a forbidden dense areas, so it's in the public health interest to not have a subject system and have it connected to the sewer system. It is a municipal building, and therefore, I believe it's the town's responsibility to pay for the costs associated with this. And that's what I think is the vision that we've been running. There's some discussion about easements, and that, if possible, probably just fix the problem once and for all, and appropriate funds to connect it to the town sewer system.
I don't have any more questions on this, we talked about it in the prior meetings.
The next article is Article Three, and this has to do with all the municipal unions, Board of Public Works, and the Board of Selectmen unions. None of the contracts are ready to be presented at this town meeting, so it's recommended that all of these be passed over at town meeting. Article Four, roadwork, Welcome Street, this is a petition article, requesting twenty-seven thousand dollars to pay Welcome Street. In conversation with PDW Director, giving the title today, we talked about the town's paving program, in which the streets are reeded and prioritized in terms of when they get paved, when they don't get paved. You know, I have the opinion that this, this would be approved in a certain event, that paving program, and allow this street to be included ahead of the other streets that would be prioritized under the payment plan. That's not to say that this wouldn't be included in the payment plan going forward, but it probably would not be funded in this particular, in that way of turn, in terms of prioritization of other streets. So that, my, my recommendation, and it'd be subject to, obviously, Board of Public Works are discussing it tonight, and this item will be definitely postponed.
So let's go right back to Article One, sale of the Oxford School. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for adoption, Article One.
Second. Motion made in second, any further discussion on the motion? Here now a call for vote, all in favor say aye. Aye. And one opposed, so it passes. Article Two, fire station sewer tie-in, number three sewer tie-in. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for adoption.
I originally, when this came up, we, there was a discussion on this, whether we should, I'd be so worried to be on the town meeting agenda, which I think it's going to be on the town meeting agenda. But I'd just like to say, we didn't have the prices for what this was gonna cost prior to this coming in, into, into tonight. We just actually received these on Friday, for how much it was gonna cost for this. And it has been brought to my attention that this building is, while a municipal building, is being used by a, an association. So I think at this point, twenty-five thousand dollars to me, for, for me, I think we could use it and, use that money, yeah, somewhere else. So I'm gonna be voting, at this point, kind of no, especially since we don't really know what's going on with the school on it, so, I guess we did, I think my vote's gonna be no.
Okay, so, I have a question now. Mr. Reese, if Article One does not pass, and Article Two does pass, and we still do, it's tied, correct?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion for Article Two? You did make a motion for adoption.
I did.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion on the motion? Here now a call for vote, all in favor say aye. Aye, and one opposed. It passes. Article Three, funding of labor contracts. The recommended motion is passed over at this point.
So if we could make one motion, it covers all of this, so.
Yes.
Like to make motion pass over?
Does this mean if it passes over, that we can't, if, if somebody does come forward and gets something settled, April thirtieth, that way, we still can't deal with them?
I received communication from the Public Works Director that the next meeting for the Highway Union is scheduled until the last of, so we will have the motion.
I'll second. Motion made in second, any further discussion on the motion? Here now a call for vote, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, pass unanimously. Got one, pass unanimously. All right, Article Four, roadwork, Welcome Streets Out. Is there a motion?
For indefinite postponement, I'd like to make a motion for indefinite postponement.
I'd like to make the motion, that we, we recommend this roadwork.
Okay, challenging my chairmanship there, okay, all right, so we have, we'll take the first one first. Do we take indefinite postponement first? Tom, yes, you doing?
Well, in this, in this case, you're not actually indefinitely, what you're doing is deciding what you're going to recommend at town meeting, so you take your first motion. You need to ask for a second.
All right. Is there a way we could, the recommendation from the selectmen could be at town meeting?
That's another alternative.
I'll just throw another alternative, yeah, next time.
Indefinite postponement, deny, at town meeting?
But I think they could, we heard on this, at least, you know. Okay, so. All right, um, okay.
I would like my motion to stand, though, because I feel all of this is a reasonable notion, that certain measures, you know, the arrangement that's in place is, is not simply a solution to the government. That's just, I think, the advice we're getting from our, Mr. Fallow, and these groups, and all the leadership itself. It doesn't mean if he can back another time, but you said, it'd be easier if this is being facilitated, and that's just, just testing the feelings.
Well, my, my feeling is that if they did make this petition, then they should be heard at town meeting, and then, so basically, we have a motion right now for indefinite postponement. Motion for adoption?
Yes.
There's no second for me.
No, maybe the one is second, there's no second to that one.
Okay, so is there a second for indefinite postponement? Here now, no, sorry, that, that motion dies. All right, is there a motion for adoption? I'll make that motion. Is there a second? Okay, now that, is there a motion for yield to petitioner? I'll make that motion, yield to petitioner, I'll second. Motion made in second, any further discussion on the motion? Here now a call for vote, all in favor say aye. Aye, and one opposed, but it passes. For a small town meeting, we're temple. All right, good. All right. All right, consider approval of a one-day all alcohol license applicant, John Holland. I have to abstain from this and hand it over to the vice chair.
Mr. Holland? Okay, I'll pass it over, just to be able to explain this one. This is a request for an all alcoholics, one-day license for a fundraiser, for the committee to reelect Charles Murphy as selectman. When this occurs, for a one-day license, there's certain things that need to take place. One, there needs to be a certificate of insurance provided, there needs to be a documentation that the server will be tip certified, there needs to be a diagram that shows that the area of fundraiser will not be part of the premises, and that's as a law rate license. One, there needs to be a certificate of insurance provided, there needs to be a documentation that the server will be tip certified, there needs to be a diagram that shows that the area of fundraiser will not be part of the premises as a, as a law rate license. For this, for, for some alcohol dissident, property located by town that has, by the causeway. So, the license, one-day licenses to town that has, they're permitted property for their alcohol licenses, they have property adjacent to it, that is not part of the permitted property, and as for the actual sale of the alcohol, it's a safe size. So, it is in compliance with the regulations of the ABCC, and in terms of those conditions and recommendations for a particular.
Okay, and, you know, we've, we've done this with other, you know, events in town, so that's, that's not new to us. I don't have any further questions, I appreciate that information, if there are any, anything I can add. Okay, is there a motion then to approve the one-day all alcohol license for the applicant, for the fundraiser at Townahatch?
I'll make that motion.
I'll just add to that, it's July's, it's on July tenth, twenty sixteen, from eleven a.m. to eleven p.m.
Yes, it's actually, it's land adjacent to Townahatch.
Right, I think that's our petition. I did get the time, right?
Yes.
Okay, right, so I'll make that. Second, add motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next we have.
Basically, as you know, this program started in January of this year. At that time, we had significant savings for the first six months of the program. For the next six months of the program, July one through December thirty-one, we're expecting to be slightly higher than, than the basic rate for ever source. Those are the first two columns in that diagram. As you go into the third column, you see high, middle, and low projections for the rates of ever source for that winter period. We will be, we're projected to be below that, those, those rates for, for ever source. And then, in the summer period next year, because of the substantial increase. Rates for ever source. Any, any questions on that?
One clarification is, I'll just speak a lot louder, I guess that we fixed.
It's a fixed rate?
It's a fixed rate, so, so it's relative, when you say higher or lower, it's relative to utility, but.
Yes.
The rate that the residents are behaving will pay is not going to change from what was.
Fixed rate to two.
Fixed rate for two years, so, just, just wanted to make that clarification, that the first six months, relative to that, were a little lower than ever source would be. Next, next six would be a little highest, but the number there may change.
Any other questions on, on those projections? Let me, let me just give you an idea of where aggregation was from over the past fifteen years. As you can see from this chart, it's households in aggregation, two thousand and two through two thousand seventeen. In two thousand two, you had the Cape Lake Compact come online with about a hundred thousand households. That stayed in place basically static until about two thousand seven, where you had Marlboro that came online. And then, basically, that stayed a little bit static till about two thousand twelve, a couple more small communities came online. And as you can see, starting in two thousand fourteen, aggregation started to be considered by many more municipalities in the Commonwealth. And you can see how that bumped up significantly, certainly in two thousand sixteen, we're up over five hundred thousand households in aggregation. And as of two thousand seventeen, it'll be about nine thousand households, nine hundred thousand households. This is a significant increase. We would expect that by the year twenty twenty, that over seventy-five percent of the households in the Commonwealth will be in some sort of an aggregation. Any, any questions on that?
One more brief chart. These charts will all be put on our website also, our town website.
This next chart just gives you an idea where good energy is in comparison to our two competitors. We basically, as of the end of this year, will have about fifty-six percent of the households in aggregation are, are households, as opposed to our two, two competitors. Any, any questions on that? Any questions on the program itself?
So, I'm anticipating that when people first start to see their electric bill, second citizens of this program, they have questions, they're going to call our office, and they're going to want to speak to someone. And I have a poll. Sorry, we will be directing them to your office to field all the calls. And I, I know they'll still come in, I know if they come in, and I can do this, so I won't be giving, maybe, maybe some feedback, I'm inserting as the contact person, maybe just, just to preface a little bit learning about this in the most recent conference call, so. But in general, I would ask you to direct them to your office, because they're very knowledgeable, a lot of them get all the questions, and then what if they just have a, pretty often ask questions, section, put people in, learn about all the questions that are being asked.
And, and my card has my cell phone number on there, I'm always available, so just refer any questions that you get to me, and I'll, I'll take care of those. Any other questions?
No, is there any questions? Okay, thank you very much, thank you for coming in. You too. Okay, we're just a few minutes behind here on our hurricane emergency preparedness, and we're going to ask each department to come up, and the person charged that department to speak on their emergency preparedness plan, if anyone has any questions for that. First, we're going to bring up our fire chief, Tim Francis, to talk about the fire department. And the many roles that he would play if he had a hurricane.
Good evening, I apologize for not being uniform on my son's playoff games tonight, and I just came right from the, I apologize for that time. Basically, the fire department, as usual, we're, we're ready to go. All of our equipment stays in, in working order, year-round, our pumps, everything. Just a few quick reminders for those of you new to the island, and there's some new people here, if you are going to stay on the island during a hurricane, obviously, depending on the severity of the storm. Please make sure you put all your lawn furniture and all that other stuff away, so that people aren't having to deal with it going through their windows or, or stuff, and that would be the winds of life. But if you're deciding to leave the island, obviously, there's a, there's a checklist that we have, we have at the station, it's also on our website, of things you should be checking off on your house, like shutting off your water, your water main, running your meter, making sure your LP tanks outside are completely shut off, so that they break free, that they're not spurring gas or, or becoming flying bombs to other people. Making sure you make arrangements, be a pet and everything ahead of time, so you're not leaving them stranded here on the island or whatever, so, obviously, we're looking at sheltering. I'm also Vice Chairman of the Homeland Security Council for this, for this district, and we do, we do have some regional shelters that are going to be set up, they'll also be on our website, there won't be one in Beavden, which you'll be able to go to, Beavden people will be welcome at the shelter, and there'll be provisions about pets, certain amount of pets unless they get overwhelmed, because this will be our first year doing that. So, we're working on that with Surfed right now to get that all squared away. The main important thing is also, once the storm is over, and the police department, and the state health, and, and what it means to safety to come back to the island, obviously, we're probably not going to have power, so there's things you got to think about there. So, if you're bringing generators over or other means to take care of your equipment, please make sure when you, when you touch a generator and you're going to try to run your household, that you shut off the main breaker in your house. Like I said, this is part of our checklist, we have a twenty item checklist that you should be looking at on our website if you can. But if you don't shut it off, and there's a wire down somewhere, somebody else can grab that wire, you could be back feeding into the whole system, and we've seen it happen before, and that's why I keep bringing it up every year, where people think the wires are dead, and they're not, because somebody generated two houses down, is feeding all of those wires. So, those are important things you want to look at. Obviously, I'm a firm believer that West Island is a beautiful place, but if we have a serious hurricane, I don't believe anybody belongs staying on an island. I mean, it's surrounded by water on all sides, it should be time for you to move on, and hopefully come back, and if there's something left that is still alive, is how I look at it, and if we're not endangering people to try to rescue you, or whatever, the cosmic could wash out, we might not get here for a couple days, other than by boat, just to see what's going on. If anybody has any questions for me?
R.A. Walshy Jr., West Island, your pet program, is it a formal or informal plan? Is it something that's written out, or it's just word-of-mouth plan?
No, it's going to be written out through Surfed, through the regional shelter, there'll be a policy and everything that'll come out on, on what's going to happen, what you're required to do, you're supposed to have a cage for your pet, and there's certain things that are going to require you to bring your own food and stuff like that, but you will be able to take your pet to you, with you to the shelter.
How's the public community aware of this?
Surfed will be putting out a, a media thing as soon as they get it all done. They're working with the state and Mema and Beamer on this, so, I'm praying to God it's going to be ready for this year, we're trying.
Does this cover us as far as the Beavden program, as far as reimbursement for natural disasters?
Does this cover the town of Beavden, you mean?
Right.
I believe it does, I, I won't swear, but I believe that's the reason we're heading that way, so we can be covered. Yes?
Well, I guess I'm going to ask you the same question I asked you over the year.
It wouldn't be the same, last seventeen years on.
Well, twenty-five years ago, they had a fire truck on the island, civil defense had an ambulance. I just don't understand, if one house burns, the island would occur.
We learn from the arrows of our ways, when on an island, you don't belong on an island, and you shouldn't be endangering other fire parties and other pieces of equipment, this equipment is expensive, as it was back in the day, it's expensive now. You're talking a piece of fire apparatus, seventy-eight hundred thousand dollars, it doesn't belong here during a hurricane.
We're talking about multi-million dollar houses on West Island, and was here, not here twenty years ago, they deserve some kind of protection here, and they're not here, that, that's. I, I understand your policy, but I think you're wrong. Twenty-five years ago, you could put civil defense here and one fire truck, I don't see why this, you can't do it now, it just doesn't make any sense to me. One house burns, and not their island burns, and no fire protection.
First of all, one house burns, not half the island is going to burn, the houses are not that close together, where we're going to have to really worry about that, number one. The bottom line is, the equipment is too expensive, and the manpower is, it's too dangerous to leave somebody on this island. I, I wouldn't want, I, I wouldn't want to have to go to their family members and tell them, I left them protected, and they're not coming home today. It's bad enough we have to do, we have to go into house fires and stuff, so unless.
I can tell you this, fifty percent of the residents on West Island ain't going to leave the island, they're not going to leave their animals here.
That's their choice.
We have no place to put animals.
That, that's their choice, you have a choice, though. Everybody has a choice to leave the island, the town of Beavden sets up two shelters, everybody has a choice to leave the island.
All the lots on West Island are sixty by a hundred, so don't tell me the houses are fire apart.
They're fire enough apart.
Sixty by a hundred?
Have we ever lost more than one house here, Harvey, in my thirty-eight years on this job? I don't think so. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Chief. And. I appreciate the, I think the general thinking there, I appreciate the chief mentioning that every year, that, you know, when you make certain decisions, you put someone else in front of way when they need to rescue you, so, I would hope that everyone would take that into account, and, and, and. Okay, once again, thank you, Chief. Next, we have our Beavden Police Department, Chief Myers.
Good evening, once again, the police department, same as the fire department, will be well in preparation well before the storm hits, usually twenty-four hours or more, will be preparing everything we have. We'll have all our stuff ready to go, we'll be making our assignments as the storm approaches, we work closely with the fire department monitoring that. If the board of selectmen was to obviously order evacuation, we'd be coming down to notify everybody best possible, we've obviously tried to use the reverse nine-one-one to notify everybody of that, but we'll also be making checks in person to make sure if we just have no communication, if that's the case. Once again, we, we as well won't have somebody on the island, we'll have people, if possible, stationed south of U.S. Avenue, where it also has a tendency to flood out. We won't have a large amount of people down here, but we would have somebody in the area if possible to, to assist down this way if we can. Again, we won't tell officers what their lives are danger, but they obviously would be out there if needed, to try and assist anybody if, if we could. As we've already talked about, make sure you have your pass available, as we will be setting up, the, the, so significant for Sponic Connect West Island, they'll be setting up the pass program, which means Sponic Connect will get locked off if David Trump will not, nobody will be able to enter Sponic Connect West Island without their pass. We'll be checking as your, as your zones go by color, if a lot of people are any further south. We'll be out immediately after the storm passes, doing initial surveys, assisting with the fire department, PDW, and getting roads open, doing property checks, doing what we can to keep an eye on your properties, you know, not having people down here going through property, they'll go on down here. And we'll just obviously be monitoring everything we can before and after, and assisting however we can. Just be. I'm sorry about this.
Anything else? You know, today, a lot of people have gone away. That they're on the nine-one-one list, or, or, I made calls, I didn't go out.
It allows you to enter any phone numbers that you want to receive that message from, up to three. There's the Plymouth County Sheriff's Office, whose system we use, so if you go to their website, look under the reverse nine-one-one system, you can apply for three phone numbers.
Thank you, Chief, we mentioned about shelters, so I'd like to call up the superintendent of the school department, Dr. Baldwin.
The shelters, again, are schools, the Hastings Middle School and the Wood School, simply put, when we get notification from the town that it's time to open up one of the shelters, that's what takes place. The planning goes on ahead of time, there's great coordination. Uh, the planning goes on ahead of time. There's great coordination amongst all town departments well in advance. And discussions that take place, uh, every time that we have opened a shelter, FEMA has been there for the entirety. Uh, we notify a custodian ahead of time. They know the ins and outs of, of what happens. We test on a weekly basis the generators, uh, in both, uh, places and make sure that they're ready to go. Uh, most of this is planning ahead of time. Uh, things that have changed since the onset of, of putting this together. We do contract out now with our food service, uh, but that hasn't, uh, stopped us. It's, it's not gourmet. But, uh, it's gonna be, uh, sandwiches and soups that are prepared ahead of time. Uh, we do have on the list to contact a school nurse if we need to. Uh, the only piece, uh, that we've seen, and we're talking specifically hurricane, but we have seen in the past when there's a blizzard and somebody lives in one, if that nurse lives in Treetown or, uh, if that custodian lives in Fall River, it is difficult for them to get here. But there's never been a problem in coordinating with FEMA or talking to, uh, police, fire, uh, BPW in, uh, getting safety personnel available at a building. So that's the only thing. Sometimes in a blizzard, uh, a hurricane might be different, but in a blizzard, if somebody's under twenty inches of snow, they can't get out of their home in Fall River. But we've had transport, uh, in the past, um, unfortunate to live, or unfortunate to live close to the middle school and have been transported to the past there to open things up. And, uh, BPW has, uh, plotted a path there and, and we've been able to go. So a lot of this is really on our end, well ahead, ahead of time and working with other town departments. I don't know if there's any questions.
I'm sorry, are you saying the old schools?
The primary schools, the middle school, uh, that, that we have. And then, uh, if, if it were need be, all schools are ready to go, yes.
And how do you define those?
Notification. We have, in the past three to five years, uh, have had a couple of times when this has been called and have had very few people at the inn. Uh, and we've had ample room, uh, in the, in the gymnasium at the middle school with good lighting and a lot of leftover sandwiches. Uh, God forbid, there was an event that took, uh, a lot of space. We do have a lot of room at the middle school first and foremost, and then, uh, the Wood School also. Any other, Mr.?
Do the schools allow pets?
No, I, at, at the last, uh, case, no. I believe that was a choice that people had to make on the pets thing. I think that came up in an earlier question. Uh, 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 again, when it, when it turns over to this kind of, uh, decision, it's a shelter, uh, it's housed at a school and the shelters don't have pets being brought here.
But they're hidden on shelters.
Correct. Thank you very much. Any questions from the board or? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Baldwin.
Thank you.
Next, we have our emergency management preparedness plan. EMA, Joe.
Basically, we keep, uh, everything in order as best we can, all the equipment's all checked on a regular basis. And, uh, I, God, within an event of a incident, it's to provide emergency communications, uh, to the state and other departments. And, uh, we take care of operating the shelter if need. We have approximately fifty bots that we transport to the school before the storm is hit. And I also have a personnel ladder trained in shelter management. They take over and assist in operating the shelter. After the storm is by, then we help with the cleanup, chainsaws and water pumps and equipment like that. Not yet any questions?
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Is there anyone here from community nerves? They've also submitted a plan, so we have them. Next, we have the Office of our Harbor Master. Cox?
Yeah, so, um, what we're gonna do is just try to get our public awareness out there. Um, if a storm's coming, get the boats out of the water. If they can't get them out of the water, double up the lines, make sure everything's secure. Um, we will, I will send out our deputies to do an inventory of what's out in the water, uh, before the storm. Um, but to get your stuff out early is better than, than later. Um, I station, um, deputies at the boat ramps to keep organization going when boats are coming in and out. Um, to get the boats out, to keep things, uh, flowing smoother. And then during the storm, I'll, I'll, um, I'll be at the, um, command center or whatever's going on to help you guys monitor the water front. And then after the storm, I'll go along and assess what's going on and report back. And then prior to a storm, I'll get all the equipment. We have, have a portable generator, um, stuff like that, radios. Uh, get everything charged up just in case for the storm cover all set. But other than that, really, the better to get your boats out. And I think if, if they're predicting a, a, a storm, and most insurance companies will pay to have your boat hauled. Um, so it's cheaper to haul your boat than it is to replace a boat, so, um. We have, that's all we have. Any, um, any other, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Cox. All right, uh, next, we have the Board of Public Works versus Administration. Mr. Patato.
Uh, during an emergency, um, we're responsible for clearing out, clearing the roads, maintaining the two pumps, uh, the, uh, two treatment plants we have and the pump stations as well as, uh, providing drinking water to folks. Both the John Chavon, the Highway Superintendent, maybe Ford, the Water Superintendent are here. So I don't wanna steal any of their thunder. But basically, we have both crews, providing water and providing sewer. Uh, so when there's a storm here, the Sewer Superintendent, um, will be turning on generators, uh, for the pump stations that have generators or touring there for ones that don't. Administrative wise, we're gonna be, uh, covering the, uh, command center, answering phones, depending on what comes in. We react accordingly. As the chief mentioned too, please get your hurricane passes because depending on the nature and the extent of the storm, this is only gonna block folks from going any south of, uh, David Trump hold on. And you're not gonna be able to go home. So, uh, you know, please get your pass in ahead of time. And if a storm is coming, uh, we'll, uh, extend the hours at the Public Works Office to accommodate folks. Cause we realize not everybody's available, you know, for me to forthright. And another good thing that the chief mentioned too is, uh, there's a good chance if we have to shut the water supply off, we're going to, uh, well, we will send out a reverse nine-one-one. Or is, please, please, uh, provide your number to the Plymouth, uh, Plymouth County Sheriff's Office. Because if you have a cell phone, you don't have a home phone and it's not listed anywhere, you're not gonna get that call. And we won't know that the, the water didn't shut off.
Any questions? I'm gonna bring Mr. Charbonneau, so, uh, I'll highlight. Good evening.
All right, all of our equipment's been checked, uh, all pump, uh, EPOC pump house has been filled, it's been run, it's been, um, all the roads have been changed. My biggest thing is having sightseers out there during the storm. Uh, the trees coming down is making it more difficult for everybody else out there. Um, we'll do our best to clean up as quickly as possible, uh, but the helping of the public would be much appreciated. Everybody else is pretty much covering everything that, uh, I was thinking of, so. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Benan?
Is a tree warden come under your jurisdiction?
No, he does not.
He, he's gonna be speaking.
Oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charbonneau. Uh, Vinny, anything you wanna add to sewer, Mr. Schick or?
No, I mean, again, the goal of the sewer department is to try to keep the flow going, you know, during that time. The only thing is if any point has to shut off the water, um, it'll be a concerted effort between the sewer and the water. If the water gets shut off, the sewer or pump stations that are affected are gonna be shut off as well. So, you may get one good flush left, but that's all you're gonna get, so, uh, just a word to the wise. Fill a bucket or something like that.
Vinny, the animal did shut off, though.
The, uh, yes.
Other than we know.
Yes. We don't do it every time, but like Ivory soap, ninety-nine to forty-four percent, yes. It would just because of the potential, you know, the saltwater intrusion compromise, or the potential thereof.
Well, very important department during a hurricane is also the Water Department. Mr. Ford?
Uh, as Vinny alluded to, we will shut the low lying areas off, um, well in, in advance of the storm. So you wanna make sure that you're prepared with enough water. Um, the last issue, the last storm we had, uh, we were way ahead of the storm, yet we didn't anticipate the tide coming up so quickly. And there were a few, uh, of the personnel that ended up getting stranded trying to shut down some of the sewer pump stations. So there's a lot that we will look into before we shut it off, but it's gonna get shut off. So don't wait till the last minute to draw water for the duration. Once we turn it, once the storm is passed, it will, will not be turned on right away. We have a lot of assessment to do if there's any kind of damage, any of that flooding to make sure there was no movement in the cottages or anything like that. So you can anticipate a delay after the storm. As soon as we can get out to make some assessments, then we can turn it back on. If there is a lot of damage, um, be prepared to not have water, at least drinking water for a while. We would have to shut off individual cottages that were damaged. And then we would have to check, do some bacteria sampling throughout the town like we did with Hurricane Bob to make sure that everybody is safe. But the biggest thing is we will shut off well in advance. We wanna get the water off and get our people back to our senior street and be safe. So we will, we will do it as quickly as we can. There will be a reverse nine-one-one. I can't tell you how quickly it goes, goes out. It depends on the decisions we make once we're at the command center. But we will, we will send one out, uh, so make sure, as I said before, that the numbers are recorded so they can reach you. And once I shut the water off in the low lying areas, it's not just West Island. It would be Wilbers Point, it would be, um, down near Farmfield Street. There's, there's a lot of sections down Wheaton Road that will be shut off, so this is just the island. There's any low lying area, there will be problems. And if there are, if there are sewer pumping stations in those areas, they're not gonna be working either, so you won't be able to flush anything. Cause they can't run one off the water. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Next, our tree warden, Dr. Boconk.
Thank you. Tree department, uh, like the other departments, is pretty much ready for, uh, emergency situation. Well, in advance of hurricanes, we would have all the equipment, uh, ready to go. Presently, we're in a situation where we respond to small emergencies, uh. We have a thunderstorm, a couple of trees go down, and the tree department responds to that. We work very closely with the highway, Public Works Department and, uh, police fire dispatch when there's, uh, some kind of a tree emergency. So we're basically ready to go at any time. We have a number of people who are trained to use the equipment. During the height of the storm, we probably would rather not be out cutting trees unless it is an emergency. But after the storm has passed, we'll be out there trimming roads as we can, working with the other departments to make sure that we get through this emergency as quickly as possible. But we're trained, ready to go and, uh, hopefully, we won't have to use, uh, a lot of people, uh, during a hurricane, but, uh, we're ready to go if we have to. Any questions? Mr. Benan, you have a question before?
No, I'm joined.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Boconk. Next, we have our Fairhaven Senior Center, Mrs. Sylvia. You could've brought the mic to you, man.
You know what I was thinking? Wouldn't it be fun to have the shelter at the senior center? I know, I, we can't because we're not equipped. We could make a big panella, kielbasa, hot steak, play bingo, bocce. Our, our family hasn't changed in, from the past year. We, um, primarily focus on the days before the storm to get people out, um, shopping or banking or whatever they need to do. Um, we can put up just three vans out, um, if needed. And, um, we always post, um, an informational, um, section in the newsletter about hurricane preparedness. That can also be found on the website under the COA. It's good information for everybody, not just seniors. If you are oxygen dependent, call your supplier a couple of days before so that you can get your extra tanks in there. Cause they're really busy, um, trying to deliver extra tanks to everybody. And, um, you know, we, we do keep a list of frail elders, um, at the senior center who we know have nobody to look in on them, so we, you know, keep close eye on them through the event, whether it's snow or on hurricane. And, um, I know my sidekick, Joe, wants to say a few things about, um, um, the seniors and, um, weather events, so here you go, Joe.
I gave him trouble, I know he did, man.
Right, no kidding.
Uh, she's the best.
She is.
I should, I'm, I'm not a department head. I've been on some of the town boards and four years ago, I attended all the meetings for the last hurricane storm for me, or what's going on. Tonight, I haven't heard anything about, uh, EverSource shutting off the power. And that's up to them, right, Chief? Old Chief? When they see their meters going down and lines go, going down on their computers, they automatically shut off the electricity. And we don't have any control over that. I was gonna talk a little, at a little global level than a department head, more for the elderly, the disabled and people that are on these islands and... If you have to leave here, you need to bring some stuff with you. And somebody last year after this meeting told me the best way to explain it was pack up as if you're going on vacation for a week. And that means you need to bring your cell phone with you and don't forget to charger. You need to bring some money with you because of the power failures all over time. You're not gonna be able to use the bank machine, you're not gonna get in the supermarket, cause they have the same problem as everybody else. I would, I would leave the island and make arrangements ahead of time so I knew where I was going with some friend or relative. My house is already full. Um, but there's consideration like with the police department, you can register a disability ahead of time with anybody that's elderly or disabled and they have one, two, and three after you dial nine-one-one for police, fire, and ambulance. And, and when that phone rings at the, uh, dispatcher's office, it automatically tells them there's somebody there that's elderly, on dialysis, or whatever the problem is. So they're, they're ahead of the game in a, in a, in a couple of minutes. And that's always helpful in emergencies. There's a couple of other things. Yeah, you need to bring, you bring, you need to pack up for a week when you leave here. Because if you, yeah, I take my car off the island because if that causeway lets go, you're not gonna get it off here for a long period of time. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Barelli. Always very good information that you give out. Next, and, and our final department is the Fairhaven Housing Authority, Maschidi.
Yeah, I'm gonna basically, um, ditto everything Ian had to say, um, but I will also add to that, that we often, we always, uh, issue a list of, um, the items that you should have to be prepared for any upcoming, uh, blizzards or hurricanes or the like. We send that out to our tenants. We do wanna let everyone, uh, know that the tenants do need to be responsible for themselves. Um, we do the best we can, but we really are not equipped to provide, um, any long-term uh, emergency shelter type of situations. Uh, so we're also letting the families know that you should probably check in on your elders, your parents, or your, or disabled. Um, and if anybody should be taken away from the authority, that might not be a bad idea. Shelter them in a, at a home stay. Shelter them in a, at a homestead as opposed to the apartments. We do have new this year, a very nice portable generator with two transfer switches that have been installed, one for Oxford Terrace and one for Building One Hundred at McGann Terrace. It's interchangeable with the generator that the fire department has. So we, those are only going to be able to provide power to some common areas. It does not provide apartments to be powered throughout. We also have some temporary smaller generators that can be used at some of our other facilities. We also provide a list to the fire department and the police department of any of our compromised elders or disabled that may need special attention. And we also have concerns still about people refuse to leave their pets behind if they're being recommended to go to the shelter. So encourage to hear that that's going to be resolved hopefully sometime soon. And let's see, I think that's about it. We do have our maintenance staff available if anything were to happen. So we do the best we can, but we're not really set up to be a shelter. So any questions? Anybody out there?
Thank you, Maschidi. I'm going to turn it over to the slide for now.
I'd just like to thank everyone for the, for their discussion tonight. I think maybe this is something that this, this recorded meeting, that would be government access here to record, is something that we could play just prior to a storm. Because it's, you know, it would be fresh in people's minds and it's a lot of new information. And if this is something that we should think about doing, maybe keeping it on there throughout the summer and, you know, hurricane season. Every now and then play it, but through the video on demand, it can always be there. But if it just prior to a storm, it would be helpful. Thank you. I'm not sure if the chief mentioned this before. Is there something on your website that would tell people some supplies that they should have? And, you know, flashlights and?
We have it here now, and we'll make sure room on our website.
All right, like candles and stuff like that? Because obviously candles are returning to a house fire and all that stuff.
It's online.
It is online. Okay, thank you.
It's on, it's on my, on, on, on my website. It's on the newsletter process, on the website.
All right, is it, is it on the website that Towne's, that's all? Or is this a supply? Mr. Reeves, do you have any?
There's two points. One, as the new town administrator and the new former government, I'm not sure what role I play in terms of emergency management. He's the board of selectmen, and W nine is the chief of administrative officer. But I plan to talk with town, town council committee in terms of interpretation, in terms of whose, her roles and responsibilities I have. And get back to the board on that. The second point is I'm very impressed with the preparation that the town departments have made for hurricanes. I've been in the municipal government for a few years. I've dealt with natural emergency numerous times. And just wanted to say I'm very impressed with the preparation and work on, on Fairhaven. One of the things I'd like to do going forward is put together an integrated policy act that covers all the departments so that they're all standardized in terms of what their procedures and preparations are. So it's consistent from one department to another, and unified hurricane books, and emergency management books, to deal with the problems that this is going to create.
Just to clarify your roles, you have to discuss the law and operate the property.
I'd just like to, oh, yes, we have another, Mr. Rogers.
Yeah, just for the sake of individuals, if your property is in an area that could be compromised in the event of a, of a storm, before, prior to the storm, take pictures of everything in your house, inside and outside, and that would be advantageous to you. And in fact, if you have any damage, the insurance companies are going to be looking for that information. And it makes it a lot easier for you if you have to recover from, from damage during the storm. So with the cellphones today, you can do a walk around the house and take pictures of all, everything that's inside. And especially if you're in a low-lying area, which, and the tide is going to come up and it's going to do, commence some amount of destruction. You need, need that because the, the insurance companies are going to be looking for the documentation.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. And I also want to personally thank all the department heads who put together a great plan. I've been very, I'm not, I wouldn't say fortunate, but I, I've witnessed the team in action, you know, during a storm. And it's been, everyone works really hard and works together. And the role of selectmen, usually, Dr. Bocock's here, he knows that we usually are on call twenty-four hours. And they used to give me the midnight shift because that's when I'm off. But, but it's, it's incredible to see the team in action. I hope to God we don't have any hurricane or any major storm. But everyone does work very hard during those times. So I just want to thank the department heads because we have seen them in action also. So that takes care of our appointments for tonight. Now we're on discussion, the Bell Committee request. Mr. Brady, do you want to come up? Because this, this, this all, it goes in line here. Our request to temporarily display the river bell at town hall. So the first request from the Bell Committee is that you wish to place on our agenda which it has been. And the goal is to get the nineteen, seventeen ninety-six river bell out and visible to the public and residents so they can see this historic natural artifact instead of remaining crated up away from view.
Basically, to, on the opposite corner where the MIA chair is, to create a net spot there, a four-by-four, and of the exact same size, and to create a cradle in which it would sit upon Keith Will, the main services building for us, and create a temporary display. Again, it's just to get it out, it's been in the box, let's get it out, let's get it displayed.
How much, how much does the bell weigh?
It's seven hundred and fifty-six pounds on the side of the bell. It's roughly seven forty, seven, I thought. So I did ask the city makers, if it would be able to support, roughly eight hundred, eight hundred pound weight of weight. He said that would not be able to show.
Yeah.
In full, it's a small, it's only thirty-two by roughly twenty-eight. So we're not looking to build a very monstrous display or anything. Something very capable, similar to use a Photoshop. So we're going to have to use a little imagination on it. But something similar to that. It would be, again, a Photoshop sort of effect.
My private question is going to be, would it be cleaned up on the site? Sorry, this is not the question.
It wouldn't be anytime soon. What we have to do is we have a professional bronze and, and star that can speak to it, to get an idea of cleaning it up. The way it looks now, if we clean it up and just wash it, it will look the exact same way only without the actual material on it. So what they will do is keener it, to blend it all into a smooth look. And then at that point, we would go ahead and move forward.
I don't have a problem with this request. I think it's something that, you know, you best work out on, trying to get that bell there. I think it's something that we could display there. Just as long as the floor can hold it, we can find a spot for it, whatever we need to do. You guys said Keith, did we talk to Keith so we can add that to the, okay.
Neil spoke with Bill, he said that he wants that. I just think that Bill didn't speak that. And he did say to me that the area that we have in mind would have no problem supporting the bell.
So is the, has there been progress made on, this is described as a temporary location, right? So has the committee decided what we'd like to do with it in the long term? And, you know, is when that transition would be from here to a new location?
It's a, it's a place right now to, I thought I could mention the road there, to have it on so people can see it, and actually see there is a bell. You know, instead of seeing it, is there really a bell? It's just to have it out in view for right now. And we're still working on a safe, permanent location. You know, that's going to be well-lit, well-protected, and, you know, on time protected. So that's still all going to work.
Something like that's going to take a long time to actually do. It's not going to be overnight or short term. So this is just a, just to get it out in the public, just to get it so people can see it. Down the road, long term, you know, obviously if you do an outside display, you have to go through a lot of the town information and all that. So this is just the first step of it, at least just getting it out to the public so they can see what we have.
Well, I like the idea of being on display. I think, you know, in town hall is a good idea. I was wondering if your committee, if we approve this tonight, could meet with our town administrator, Mark, and Ann, our administrator assistant. So she, that you can make sure that that is the best location in our town hall? Because they may have some other ideas. And I think that it'd be good to, just to kind of collaborate with them. If you'd be willing to do that. And that way, you know, you can come up with the best location. But I think tonight we can approve if we can display it as a board of selectmen. And then go from there on to where the best location in town hall would be. So with that, is there a motion?
I make a motion to allow the Bell Committee to arrange to set up and display the bell in town hall.
Motion made in second today for a discussion on the motion. Here now, a call from both, all of the papers say aye. Aye, opposed, it passes unanimously. Okay, next we have requests from the Bell Committee to request a structural engineering study from Mr. Bradford for the Oxford School Kupla.
I know basically during discussions, we'd always hope to put the kupla back on top of Oxford School. Much easier said than done. It's a little naive of us to think you can just cut the leg smooth, put a couple of joints on it, and back up. I know the discussions are happening with Stratford regarding the building in, in that area. And we just would like, no matter what happens, a engineering study has to happen on both pieces before anything could even be done. So the question was for us, is Stratford would be willing to at least engage in some type of study on both pieces to see if they could be put back together? Because at some point, providing it goes through, or whoever ends up with the building, however it goes, it's going to have to be addressed, and there will have to be studies done. And since it is a potential new owner, we're hoping that through negotiation, they might be willing to at least do that part. We do have people that are willing to restore the kupla, build a new one. We have all that part covered, but it's a whole tie-in aspect because it is a liability aspect, and we do have to make sure everything is engineered, engineered correct.
Well, as you know, I'm making sure I'm on the corner, especially I'm getting like this, producing sales agreement. I have no problem asking a question. I don't know where it's going to go. But I am asking a question. And, you know, I'd like to make it crystal clear what, what's this. So you'd be asking for them to do a structural study of putting something back on that would be, that would be rebuilt. Would it be the original kupla that came off being rebuilt or a new structure? Would it be that they need to know what it's going to look like before they can answer the question?
The kupla itself can be, if it's structurally sound, how do we engineer that to be able to mold it back together into one part? And even the base has to be studied because that base itself, whether that's structurally sound too in the long run, because it had been up there for quite a while. What we're asking, the kupla, if we have a new one built that would, could be identical to the one we have, or we can use some parts of one we have to try to keep some authenticity to the area, put something back up there. We've been advised we can go either way with that. But the bottom line, nobody can do anything until we know structurally if the base is sound and how would it be able to be connected? And then they would be able to do the plan accordingly, and then work with them to get it put up there. If we're only asking the question, that's all we ask, is that you ask the question, they'll either say we're, we can address it now, or we'll take it up sometime down the road and get back to us then.
Second, Chris? Yeah, I don't have a problem with asking Stratford if they'll volunteer some of that time or whatever. I really don't, I, I got to be honest with you, I don't think they're going to, and I think they've already said this, they're not going to pay to have it put back up. So I think that that would be something that if people want to back up. And I know in one of the dramas, excuse me, one of the pictures, of one of the schools that they had, they did keep the kupla up there and they, and they fixed it so it looks nice. So I'm, I'm for trying to get it back up there because it does have characters in that area. I just, I don't know whether they're going to say yes to that at all. So I, I don't have a problem asking.
Well, the question becomes the structural is first. That's going to decide how much is going to be needed. We have plenty of carpenters and contractors that are willing to do the services for free, basically. We have a crane company that's willing to bring it back up there. We have everything on that side covered. We just don't have the structural side of how do we tie it back together? Whether it's that, or if we build a new design that they say here's some plans that we can still use to be historically accurate, and then bring that to the other side so that we can work with it. To have it all set, lift it up and tie it in. But we can't figure out price wise unless we might find out if the old kupla is completely structurally unsound or the base itself might be unsound, and that completely limits anything at that point.
So, you know, these, as we discussed in the past, these, these questions could be asked of the independent engineer. We could do the same thing that we're asking them to do. But from their perspective, I, I would think, you know, they would be hesitant to put out money to have a structural engineering study done, not knowing for sure if it's just going to be a commitment on the other end to actually rebuild it, this, this up. So we're at a, we're at a point right now where you don't have that information yet. So again, I'll ask the question, but I'm just trying to make, like you understand why I'm asking you this question.
Our commitment has always been to put the kupla back because it has been up there for a hundred and fourteen, fifteen odd years. And it is a part of the skyline. But it's much more than just saying we want to put it back, level legs, plop it down. But it's much more than just saying, we want to put it back, level legs, plop it down. It just isn't that simple. And that's why the structural engineering aspect will dictate which way we go. But we have, everybody willing to volunteer the services, the contractors and carpenters. It's just, what are they going to do that will be acceptable? We don't want to put a ton of risk either. We don't want to build something, put it up there and have something happen. Now it's, it's still the town building because it'll take years. And now there's a liability aspect. So we're looking for plans from their side that will say, if this is done, and this is, you know, we're looking at this design, that's half I just are. We're just in front of the law and go back. And here's what needs to be done because this is sound. We just need to do this to the base or whatever it may be. But we can't do any of that without that information. Again, it's just a, can't hurt to ask them. Sooner or later, again, at some point, if they do end up owning the building, they're going to have to address that issue anyway. Because it is sitting up there, needs to be dealt with, however they want to deal with it. That's providing we want to put it back. That would be in their hands and it's something down the road they're going to have to export.
I believe in, in the past, that they've looked at signal, but they don't have a problem with it being there. Just that they didn't really want to pay to put it back up. But that could change significantly if the building assaulted them. They may want to keep that character of the school there. So it, it really does come down to what's going on on the, you know, on June thirtieth with, with the town meeting. And I, I, you know, at this point, I wouldn't blame them for not wanting to go down that path at this point. Not knowing if it's something that they're even going to own, you know. And I think that's, with a lot of questions that we've gotten over, you know, in the last couple of weeks about the, about the school. We can't answer them all because they don't know if they're buying, you know. They know that they want to buy it. They just don't know if we want to sell it from them yet. So we'll figure it out on the thirtieth. And that may be a consideration that they can think about as of tomorrow evening. We have our meetings with the Stratford group, um, at the hall in town hall, top floor, on Tuesday, the twenty-first.
I think it would be a little unfair to ask them to respond on my phone.
Yes, but at least you can propose a question to them.
We're just throwing it out there as far as our commitment was trying to get it put back up. We're asking them a question. Obviously, they're not going to say, yeah, we're willing to move the building. But something could be negotiated that if the sale does go through, we'd be willing to do this part. Or at some point, like if we're going to have to address it sooner or later, that's hot, no matter what happens. And how they want to address it, maybe they come back in whatever year or so and different call again.
And if it does get approved, oh, it's going to be eight hundred pounds lighter, I'll tell you that much. And if it does get approved at a special town meeting, then in order to get some historical grants, they may have to put it back. They may have to make it look back down. So it may take care of the situation itself, but we'll have to wait and see.
Due to the condition, I believe I showed you all the pictures of the current condition, the cradle. And the bell itself is listing off to the side. We're at the point where we can go ahead. The crane company is willing to do it. We've done the measurements. The opening is eight feet tall. The railing will not be touched. It's three feet high. That gives us more than ample room to be able to take the crane in, hook it up and take it out. It is nothing like the last removal. The bell will easily fit in and out of the opening that's up there. And there's no, nothing that has to be taken down or, uh, obviously not cut off or removed. But, so that's what we're looking at this point. Can I pursue it as far as the date? The crane company, member and cranes are willing to donate their services. We just need to know if we have the okay date to do it. And then we will come back to you with a date that's not conflicting with anything else happening in town. And it won't be anything along the lines of what we did with the last one as far as amusement aspect. So that's what we're looking for. It's to take it down. And again, it's to take it down to save it because it is listing and it is completely rotted. And it, you know, it is also a valuable item as well. We do have hopes to repair it, create a new cradle, and eventually put it back up there if that's what happens with the building. And that's what the wish is.
I don't have a problem with doing this. It's, you know, again, this, we have volunteers that are going to do this, send across the town meeting. And, uh, it moves a liability since you're, that, that, that is right now. Yeah, I just, I have the same sentiment to Bob. It's, it is listing really bad. You can see on the pictures it is rotted through. It's maybe something guys can provide the press so that they can see it. But again, it's no cost to the town. We're just going to be approved to stake it down. And it could become a liability at some point if it's to fall out of that, out of its cradle. So, you know, okay, there's, there you go.
I mean, you can't go up there and fix it either. You can't physically go up there and say, let's just repair the cradle. Because you're not going to be up there welding with sparks flying in that, the, the building. And the, you know, the side do list as well, so the border is no longer lost. So it has to physically come down to be okay. It can be no other way. And if we have somebody willing to do it now, donating their services, you know, let's go for it.
And, and just, just so people know, the bell is in good shape. It's the cradle itself that's, that's rotten. And I also want to thank your committee for, you know, I, I don't know if you realize how many items you would have on a bell committee. But you've certainly taken on more than one project, and we are very grateful for that. And grateful for the preservation of the Roger School Bell. So with that in mind, it, oh, yes, Mr. Reese?
I don't want it to sound overly bureaucratic, but we probably need to put some word in the motion to ensure that there's insurance in place in case somebody gets injured or there was more of a comp or something like that. So the school should be subject to my review to make sure the town and, and, as I said, fully protected.
We'll, we'll provide the same, um, insurance as well as with the last one to make sure you can use that and be able to finally get it back.
I just want to add that, I was going to say that, Mr. Reese, the point of contact, so all the coordination members would also be there to keep us updated.
That's why we're still trying to maneuver which, I mean, do we go to select minimum? So, well, what happens? So it's not, I want to keep bringing that up here.
Mr. Reese is the day-to-day. He is, he, he's the man in charge over there at town hall. So, um, it's nice that you brought it front of us, but he will do the day-to-day workings of all this. That's right.
Well, some of these things probably come back with it.
So we'll give plenty, we'll have plenty of notice what the day will be as well. And we'll do the same thing for him as well.
Mr. Lovelace, head up.
Yeah, um, I, I, my name's Gary Lovelace. I just had a general statement to everyone. Um, I, I certainly understand about the, the Oxford Bell and Revere and, um, and how that came about. One of the things that's happened on the historical commission is that a lot of times, we haven't been informed about things going on. And from the sidewalks, as you know, to the base wall, a lot of people complained about the cupola coming down. And I think that the commission, um, the Bell Committee should leave with a commission first and then go to the select board. Because we're not getting a lot of these details. And, and as the Roger School Bell goes, I mean, that is more historic. And that's the original bell to the school. And I think that that should be brought forth to the commission, um, before it actually brought to the select board. Even though I commend what they're doing. But we're, we're getting, we're getting hammered by individuals saying, why do you allow this? And some of these side groups don't go through us. They go up against the board, which I understand. But we're getting repercussions because of that. And I don't know how we, we start that. But, um, you know, these are all historical artifacts, and we do have the historical commission. Um, so I, I'm just bringing that out here to everybody that, uh, I'm sure we'll get calls about, you know, what's going on with this bell.
Mr. Lovelace addresses questions and concerns. We did speak with members of the historical commission before the Oxford Bell was taken out. We did attend several meetings of the historical commission. And the chairman himself had said that that was not his purview, anything to do with the bell. And it was solely the purview of the selectmen and the Bell Committee. But we have attended, at this point, two plus, two or three meetings of the historical commission to let them know what was going on. We have spoken to different historical commission members, asking if, if they wanted to participate, be involved. And the chairman, again, has said it was not in their purview, something they would even address as part of the historical commission. So somewhere along the line, whoever wants to be hammered out. But that is what we've got when we address the commission, that it was not part of what they were doing. And I don't know what we want to add to that part.
I can see both sides, and I understand what Mr. Lovelace is saying, because there've been some controversial issues that have come before town recently. I, I think that distinction here might be because these two buildings are in the process of, you know, the, the town's in the process of trying to sell. So, you know, if it's private property, someone else owns it, the historical commission won't be responsible for that. And so maybe that's where the line, line is drawn, just that, just that thought occurred to me, Matt, but it's a point we'll take.
It's just the whole process we've been communicating with them. We've been telling them where we're going with it, what we're doing. And it's not a, we've never addressed or spoken to the commission. We've attended their meetings. We've laid out the plans. And again, it was, okay, that's not part of our purview, you know, we're on.
So just to keep the communications clear, maybe when you send a letter like this to the Bell Committee, uh, that you can cede it to the historical commission. Mr. Banan, do you still, do you still want to make a comment?
Well, the bell is, the bell, yes, among the both commissions. The Bell Commission and also the Arts Council, uh, Arts and Historical Oddities. Now, to me, this would come under the Town Oddities. And then it would come under my jurisdiction as far as the bell is concerned. Where it's going to be located in the town hall, temporarily anyway. Uh, I think it should be under the consideration of my records as far as the bell is concerned. So I thought, as far as the, um, historical commission is concerned, they're supposed to be in charge of the buildings. And now they're trying to get in charge of materials that are in the buildings. So where do we draw the line on this particular instance? That's entirely up to you people. But I think it would be wise to have it under the jurisdiction of the Arts Curator. And be located in the town hall as a temporary arrangement. What happens after that, the Bell Committee will decide with the agreement of the town, uh, select board and others to go along with it. So that is my point I'm, I'm trying to bring out.
I can't attend a lot of the meetings, but I have been an associate member of the historical commission. And I think it's a philosophical difference here, but there's actually a charge. The Histor- the historical commission has a charge. And I think you just have to go back to that charge. It, they do see themselves as the landlords of the old stone schoolhouse, the academy building, um, a couple of other historic buildings. And they see themselves as overseeing the house plaque program in town. And that's it typically in the past. But you, you, there is a charge. I can come up with it and I can distribute it to the board.
And may I say that, 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 uh, Revere Bell belongs to the historical commission? Because they're up there, and I believe that was in one of your select board meetings, that the, uh, because there will always be a commission. Um, that's why they turned the bell over, um, to the commission to make sure that stays within the town. That was in a, that was in a, uh...
Yes, I'm telling you, the bell belongs to the historical commission.
The bell, per Mr. Cruddy's letter, said if we're looking for a perpetual care, or we're looking for money, then it should be considered some organization, whether it's a town committee or something like the historical commission, where it would fall into them and then could ask for CPC money or historical money. We, I just don't know how I'm further saying. We've gone to the meeting and your own chairman of the historical commission has said, this is not anything we would be in charge of or deal with. And your, your own chairman is telling us that at the last meeting we attended, now all of a sudden, we have everybody saying, this should be in charge of this, this should be in charge of that. We're doing nothing. We're putting it out to display. Let us get it up there and figure out at that point whatever happens in the future. But it's more important to get it out there to be displayed and let people see it.
Well, once again, if the communication being transferred over when there are concerns of anything historical, to cede it to the historical commission for information. So at this point, we're going to come to a vote on the request for the, um, removal of the Roger School Bell with the stipulation that it goes through the, um, our town administrator.
I just feel as a clarification, the Roger School will be removed and stored. And it will go back on the building to the, whoever owns the property, if they're willing. But the bell will be in our hands. And just so clarification, people are going to say, well, where, where does this bell go? It will be removed, repaired and put back if the next owners wish to have it. And if they don't want the bell, then we will have the bell in our possession and decide at that time where the location of the bell will go. And again, it will keep our locations open with everybody.
So we'll also destroy our town property as well.
That's top secret.
Just as long as it's town property, that's good. All right, so is there a motion to have the Roger School Bell removed? With the stipulation that our town administrator review all the documentation prior to any type of removal?
Do you want to make that motion?
Second. Motion made in second today for a discussion on the motion. Here now a call for vote. All of the papers say aye. Aye, opposed, passed unanimously.
We may have a representative from the Roger School.
All right, they do get it. Uh, we have no correspondence tonight. Um, the next regularly scheduled board of select meeting is Monday, July eleventh, two thousand sixteen, at six thirty P M. Though by the time this is recorded, we'll probably already be in session at our October twenty, uh, June twenty-first, see? June twenty-first, Tuesday, meeting, uh, with the Stratford group to discuss the sale of the Oxford School property. Uh, we will be going to executive session tonight pursuant to Massachusetts general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one. For one, litigation, A B C disposal, and two, litigation and North Street Act, uh, access. And in our, our agenda item, we do have the, uh, Massachusetts laws about adjournment. And also, it's clearly stated what we're going to executive session for pursuant to the, uh, the laws that are provided for us in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So before we go into executive session, not to recommence an open session, uh, Selecting Mr. Donal.
I'd just like to thank the, the organizers of the Peyton Father's Day Road Race again for a great event, uh, again, every year. Uh, they do a real nice job. We had the opposite extreme of weather than last year. Thank you for the year. We had spectacular weather. Um, and, uh, just, you know, a shout-out to all the volunteers that worked on, on this event and, you know, make it run smoothly. And the amount of money that's raised by not having to pay people to, to, you know, to, uh, help with the event. And then all, all that money goes into the community for that, so just, uh, thank you, Adam, for that. And also, um, I don't know if you can say something about homecoming, but, uh, I unfortunately, uh, will not be able to make it this year. We'll be away on a family vacation, so, um, I, I just hope it goes well and we'll get the same kind of weather we had this past weekend. And, uh, you know, I'm sure you can, uh, save some rest for us. Thank you.
And just as far as selecting for this, according to you, we usually stay there at ten A M. to, uh, welcome the homecoming. Okay, there you are. So, all right, I just have a few things. Uh, once again, thank you, Selecting Mr. Donal, mentioning homecoming, and also the, uh, Father's Day Road Race that we had. It was, uh, very well organized. And how many runners did you say we had?
I didn't give the count this year.
Just under two thousand. I thought there was a lot, a lot of people there running. Um, and I was very pleased that I was able to finish the race.
I thought there was a lot, a lot of people there running, um, and I was very pleased that I was able to finish the race. It's a sentence. Uh, with my son, and that was a very nice bonding experience to, to, to do that and see so many familiar faces running in the Father's Day Road Race, including Mr. Osech. I saw Mr. Osech. Uh, and then, uh, lastly, I just want to, um, congratulate, and we may have them in here, Fairhaven students attending the national competitions, uh, for, um, the Skills USA, I believe it is. And, uh, we are, have, we have, uh, five students that are attending from Fairhaven, which is a top competition, national competition, and I just wanna congratulate them for getting to this far. Business Professionals of America would be Taylor Sullivan and Kayla DeCosta, and Skills USA, Tara Cox, Lexi Lees, and Marissa Vasquez. I just wanna congratulate these students, and, uh, let's see how things go, and maybe we can have a few of them in at some point, and to congratulate them personally. So with that being said, is there a motion to go into executive session and not to reconvene in open session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21, as stated previously and clearly defined on our agenda?
Do you want to make that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Motion made in seconded, any for a discussion on the motion? Here now a call for vote, all in favor say aye. Aye, roll call of votes, Charles Murphy in favor?
I'm Mr. Fray in favor. Daniel Fray is in favor.
Thank you, and good night.